Good evening, everyone. I will now call our May 28th special work session to order for the Mayor and City Council at 5:16 PM. Today, we have one important item to consider and discuss. Ordinance Number 2038, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to amend Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6.1 Purpose; Section 6-2 applicability; Section 6-3 definitions; Article 2, Section 6-4, the Board of Election Supervisors and Election Judges appointments; Section 6-5, powers and duties of the Board of Election Supervisors; Section 6-6, compensation and oaths of Board of Election Supervisors; Article 7 Voters; Section 6-7 Voters lists; Article 4, Candidates for Public Office; Section 6-9, nominations and certificates of candidacy; Section 6-10, qualifications for candidates for public office; Section 6-11, acceptance of nominations for public office; Section 6-12, candidates to comply with laws and regulations; Section 6-13, election of public officials to be nonpartisan; Article 4, Conduct of Elections; Section 6-14, establishment of ward election districts; Section 6-15, election day; Section 6-16, electioneering activities; Section 6-17, conduct at polling places; Section 6-18, challengers and watchers; Section 6-19, campaign materials; Section 6-20, canvas of election; Section 6-21, returns; Section 6-22, certification of results; Section 6-23, recounts; Article 6, Fair Campaign Finance Act; Section 6-24, distribution of summary of election laws; Section 6-25, appointment of campaign treasurer; candidate joining ticket or slate; Section 6-26, contributions and expenditures of pass-through treasurer; Section 6-27, books, records, and receipts of treasurer; Section 6-28, contributions of candidate; Section 6-29, limits of contributions; Section 6-30, expenditures by treasurer; Section 6-31, election reports to be filed by treasurer; Section 6-32, requirements for filing of reports by successful candidate; Section 6-33, maintenance of reports; Article 5, violations of election laws and applicable penalties; Section 6-34, prohibited conduct; Section 6-35, penalties for certain prohibited conduct, and providing an effective date. You will see that these items have changed slightly. We discussed holding off on the treasurer portion as well as the Board of Appeals process while we're still discussing that, but we wanted to not hold up passing a few of this ordinance for the election laws. To provide additional context, we have the City Clerk, Ms. Sarah Green, to provide us with more information. You now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So, just like you said, the changes that are proposed, there were just a couple of minor edits from the last version that are in yellow in this draft, and the changes have been left alone for the Board of Appeals and for the treasurer in this version of the draft. If we have any questions that require legal, we can give a call into Mr. Marcus there on standby.
Thank you. Yes, we did have Mr. Bruce, Marcus, and Ms. Sidney Patterson on the line as well, but we had a few technical difficulties, so as Madam Clerk said, we will provide them with those questions if needed. Are there any questions or comments from the council in regards to Ordinance Number Councilmember Simmons, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. As folks may recall, we first looked at the ordinance on February 5th, and then second looked at it on April 28th. And I just want to encourage folks, if they're curious, to sort of learn more about some of those conversations, they can refer back to those meetings for some additional information and conversation. For me, as I shared in those meetings, the principles that sort of guide my thinking as we consider these changes are really fourfold. One, that we have a process that's clear and easily understood. Two, that all candidates are provided an even playing field. Three, that we make sure to respect residents' voting rights. And four, that we have as simple a path as possible to the best outcome for our city every two and four years. So, when I look at the changes and the proposals, that's sort of what guides my thought process. And I do want to be sure also to thank the Board of Elections, the Clerk, and Mr. Marcus and Ms. Patterson for all their hard work. This is really months and months and months of effort here. Throughout the process, one thing that I've shared in our work sessions and with members of council is one important change I think, I believe, will help serve the city well, and that is to provide clarity to the candidate application window by not leaving it vague. As it exists, our ordinance, or code, I should say, reads that a candidate may submit their candidate application up until the last Friday in September. This proposal before proposes changing that to say that a candidate can submit their packet up to a date set at the discretion of the Board of Elections, but no later than the first Friday. So, it switches from a simple cutoff date, which is sort of an approach consistent with the state level, and I believe even the county level, to something that's more open-ended and has the potential to be moved around a bit. And as I read the language, one of the things that occurs to me technically as written in the law, the Board of Elections could theoretically set that date, you know, two years prior to the actual election day. That would never happen, practically speaking, but technically speaking, that's the way the current law could be interpreted and still be considered legal. So, I know we've got good people involved, and I know that they are an asset to the city, and I don't want to, you know, call it any question at all, but I believe the proposed change results in unnecessarily introducing the potential for an appearance of bias when there really is none, and we need not open that door. So, and in my thinking and in my experience, the simpler and the clearer we can be goes miles and miles to avoiding headaches similar to the ones like we experienced, you know, last election cycle. So, I provided a recommendation to council, and also a suggestion for inclusion in the ordinance, and simply for it to say that a candidate can file their completed candidate packet during a candidate filing period starting the first Monday in May and ending noon on the last Friday of July. So, basically provides a simple, easy-to-communicate-and-follow, effectively a 90-day window for anyone who wants to apply to sort of step forward, get in their form, and it doesn't have to be any more complicated than that. Part of my thinking here also is that, you know, the date of election itself isn't variable. The date to apply for candidacy shouldn't be variable either. So, I conclude with those thoughts. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council?
Madam President, I'd like to question. My question was to Councilmember Simmons on the, just to clarify, this first Monday of May, to begin the candidate process, beginning period, can you just clarify that timeframe from the timeframe that's already, that's been proposed?
Yes, yes, so thank you. So, the current, just sort of recap, the code as it exists now says the cutoff is the last Friday in September. The proposed change before us today says that the cutoff is actually set at the discretion of the Board, so whatever date that the Board chooses, but that date can't be any later than the first Friday in August. So, that's the proposal that sits before us. My recommendation here is to say that we have a simple, effectively 90-day window that runs from early May to the end of July.
Okay.
Does that help?
Thank you.
Do you have any additional questions, Councilmember Mills? Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? Mayor Sidnor?
Yeah, only question I have, Councilmember Simmons, you and I spoke briefly about this. Since we are almost at election season, and May is already passed, so this will go into effect today if we pass it, and May is already passed, so I just recommend that we continue the language we have here now, and then after the election, if the council choose to do so, they can implement this new language.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, and I did anticipate that, you may see in the document I've provided, a transitional relief. It's, you know, common in a law that may take effect, that there might be a transitional relief clause that allows it to take effect. So, my contemplation there is, after this ordinance takes effect, which would have to be after its second hearing, which would be later in June, given it has its first hearing this evening, that there be a reasonable time window to allow the Clerk's office and the Board of Elections to put together the candidate packet for this election cycle, and that the applications be made available then, and then the next cycle around, the full ordinance takes effect. So, specifically, the language I have here says, "Transitional relief for the 2025 election cycle. The candidate filing period shall begin within a reasonable time period after the effective date of this ordinance and end on 12 noon on the last Friday of July." And that helps us very simply, you know, take care of what we need to for this year.
Hi, I'm President, if I may.
Yes.
If you went with that language, then that would mean two weeks of having packets available this year. So, that's, I totally do not recommend that. I don't recommend the first part because having packets available for 90 days is a very big burden on my office. And historically, the election calendar has been set by the Board of Elections. I know what the code says now, but that is not, first of all, the end of September is not feasible. I mean, the ballots have to be set way before that. So, that really, you know, unfortunately, should have been corrected a long time ago. And from my understanding, the Board has always set the calendar. And I just, like, right now, we would be, we would not have packets available. Right now, we have a charter amendment pending that doesn't become effective till July 4th, so I can't do packets until after that.
Sure.
So, right now, I'm looking at a projected date, if the Board approves it, for starting packets availability on July 7th. So, if we make it the end of July, then that's two weeks this year that people would be able to pick up packets.
Am I reading the ordinance, the proposal correctly, that it already effectively is the end of July, this first Friday of August is what's proposed?
The first Friday of August.
Which is effectively the end of July within a week or less.
While Madam Clerk is looking that up, Mayor Sidnor, did you also have something that you wanted to share as well?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if I'm looking at calendar correctly, the first Friday in August is August 1st. It happened to fall on a Friday, so that's effectively July 31st, or the end of July. So, if the packets are released on July 7th, that means it's maybe a three-week
Yeah, unfortunately, because the election laws were passed before now, that's the predicament that we're in for this year, at least.
But to clarify, my transitional relief is intended to not place any undue pressure on the Clerk's office and the Board of Elections, and that's why it says within a reasonable time period, so I think everyone would understand.
Who determines what's a reasonable time period?
It's a matter of judgment. I mean, I think the experience of the Clerk and the Board would help guide what would be reasonable to allow them to complete the packet process.
I'll just make another suggestion, just to see how the council feel about this. I think, I don't think it would hurt to leave it the same as now and then change it later. I understand your passion, Mr. Simmons, but I think our Clerk does a great job, and I think it's enough time, I've been in six elections so far here, three, well, I can't count. But I think instead of just, let's just move this kind of a peace treaty, and move this along to the current legislation we have now, and then after the election, you can come back and change it. And that way, you know, have more time to discuss it. And I think every time we spend delaying, it might hose up the process, and we want to give those candidates who's going to be applying for election this year, opportunity. That's my suggestion, but, you know, it's up to this council, but I just want to put that out. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, and to clarify, I agree, I wouldn't want to delay our ordinance before us, and I would like us to keep to the schedule so that we can pass many of the other good things that are in here. One of the things I know that prompted us editing the law was some of the lack of clarity or vagueness that was in the law, or even some parts of it that were outdated and that needed to be updated. One of the other things was to try to ensure that there was sort of easy-to-read, easy-to-understand, clear, and simple, which is really what my goal is here. I will observe that the proposed change introduces lack of clarity where there wasn't previously lack of clarity. Right now, the code provides for a date certain, the proposed change is actually to not provide a date certain, so if anything, I think it makes it worse to change it in the way, the way the language is. And that's a concern of mine and why I propose adopting through this process.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. We appreciate your recommendation. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for answering those questions, and Mayor Sidnor, for your input. Prior to me moving on to some things that I wanted to bring up as well, are there any additional questions or comments from the council members? Councilmember Cole, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Just on the proposed amendment that Mr. Simmons has mentioned, I agree with the mayor. I want to move forward with what we have. There's a lot of other good things in Ordinance Number 2038. This year, being the way the calendar falls, the first Friday of August is going to be August 1st. That won't happen in many future years, just because of the way the calendar normally falls, so I think leaving it this way would be fine. I do like the idea of Mr. Simmons had of introducing a start of filing packets into the ordinance, but again, I agree with the mayor that I think that can be taken up by the next council after the next election, just so we can get this passed and get this so that the Board of Elections can do their job for the upcoming election. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. I do have a few questions and some comments as well. I was looking through the ordinance myself, and for Section 6-6, page 10, I wanted to just understand, the compensation for the Board and election judges that were noted, does this align with the Prince George's County pay scale, just for the public transparency? No?
No.
No? Okay. We have our own. Okay, thank you. For Section 6-9, page 11, number 3, I was wondering if we could either list the qualifications and provisions mentioned regarding the laws of this state in this section, or, so that they can reference it, because they may not know where to find it? I can turn to that, just to be clear.
That was not recommended by legal counsel, because the state of Maryland election laws don't all necessarily apply to the city of Laurel elections. They don't apply to municipal elections as a blanket. Yeah, so that's because we have our own.
So, for the, where it says comply with all other qualifications and provisions of this code, the charter and laws of the state, do we have, I know that this comes in the PDF format generally on our website, do we hyperlink to those sections, or how will people or candidates know which ones to reference?
Well, it would be whatever's, you know, effective at the time, so that's kind of why we don't put hyperlinks, because they get outdated.
Okay.
And really, the, I think the purpose of it, the way it's written, is to be a catch-all, so that if it's something that's not addressed in our charter code regarding the elections, then we would fall back on the state. But we do have, you know, various election laws that just apply to the city of Laurel.
Okay, so I guess, so like, for page 12, on page 12, there's a line through candidate financial disclosure, reference to ethics law 2.56. I think that's what I'm recommending, like, if, if there is a section that it references, can we put that there? Because what happens is, we may not know, and we have things in different spots that, and places that people may not know where to look to.
Yeah, so what would happen when we do the packets? The current, you know, laws would be included in the packet.
Okay.
So that, you know, because the issue with putting it in here, one, is if it changes, then you have to go back and amend this ordinance just to change a section number.
Okay, got it.
And so that's part of the issue. And then, so usually what I do when I create the packet is, whatever the laws are right then and there, that's what I include a copy of, or the section, the wording, so that's what we give the candidates.
Okay, is that something that perhaps you think we can put, this will be in the packet that you receive, or something like that, so they know where to look?
That would be like in the, probably the SOPs for the Board.
Okay.
Which, once this gets approved, that's what they plan to draft, you know, standard operating procedures for election packets and such.
Okay, thank you. Also, for Section 6-9, on page 11, number C, where it says the Board shall meet on a date set by the Board but no later than the third Monday in August of any election year to accept and review the required documentation of each applicant candidacy. I didn't see that it was included where the candidate packets will be completed by. I saw in some other sections that it said it would be no later than the first Friday of this, or no later than the third Thursday of this. Are we, is this something that we can include there as well, that the Board promises to do it no later than?
Well, that, I mean, that's kind of what it says here, on a date set by the Board but no later than the third Monday in August. So, the packet deadline occurs, and then the, you know, mayor, or the Board of Elections reviews the packets, but they have to do it no later than the third Monday in August.
Okay, so to-
So, it will probably be normally, the Board will set, it will be earlier.
Okay, so to accept and review, that means it will be completed by?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Section 6-10, page 11, should this also include that the candidate should reside in the city of Laurel or within the ward that they are running? Page 11, Section 6-10, under the qualifications for candidates, it could also, you know, go into page 12, but I didn't see where it actually, like, includes that you need to live within the ward that you're running for.
That's in the charter.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's in the, the requirements for each office are listed in the charter in Section 2 or 300, I believe.
Now, that's something that doesn't change, though, right?
Right.
Is that something that we could possibly include here? Because, again, the referencing, like, back and forth between the documents may be unclear to some people.
Yeah, when I asked the attorneys about that, they recommended against that, because they said, you know, if the charter number changes, if the section changes, then you have to go back and amend this ordinance just to change that.
Would we have to put, I guess, not referencing the charter number, but actually putting in here in words that-
That's what they recommended again.
Oh, okay, not to put the words in.
Not to duplicate either.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's in the charter. So, what we do when I do the packet is, it will include that section of the charter. It'll say, you know, if you're running for council, here's the requirements, and I give them the whole section of the code, the charter as it is right then.
Okay.
So, they have the list of the requirements, and I actually have a checklist that I include in the packet, you know, registered voter, you know, live in, you know, the ward. It has, like, all of the requirements, but with checkboxes next to them.
Okay, just trying to, when I was looking through, as a candidate, it would be difficult for me to try to look here and then look somewhere else and then try to understand. So, that's, I agree with Councilmember Simmons on trying to simplify it, not to make it difficult at all for our team.
Well, that's why in the packet, I'm able to make it clear.
Okay.
And to, you know, I have, like, basically checklist for every single thing.
Okay.
So, that, because you can't, if you, if you try to do that in here, you're kind of making it, you're getting in the weeds in what shouldn't be in, in that, in the law.
Okay.
You know what I mean? So, the, usually the packets have, you know, all of the requirements and make it simple. I put it in simple wording for the candidates to understand.
Okay, thank you. For Section 6-12, are we able to possibly add a definition in the beginning for nonpartisan? I'm not sure if everyone understands that. I saw it referenced in the documentation.
You want to add to the definitions?
Yeah, I didn't see it in the definitions.
Yeah, I don't think it, I don't remember seeing that. Yeah, I can work with the legal, get a definition of that. We can get a definition for them.
Okay, thank you. Section 6-16, which is page 13 to 14, can you please confirm if there's a fine or a fee for signs that are left up around the city? Because I know, I remember, there being said that there's a fee for signs that are left past a certain timeframe, and it tends to be a eyesore in the city of Laurel, where people just leave them and expect someone else to clean them up, and I didn't know if there was something that we need to include in here.
I don't believe there's a fine. Well, actually, it would probably be, probably would be whatever the, you know, municipal infraction is based on the sign ordinance. Part of the problem, too, with the signs being placed on private property, there's really, I mean, we can ask them to remove the signs, but like, you know, if a homeowner has it in their yard, that's their prerogative, unfortunately, that, you know, we can't tell them, well, you have to take that sign up.
No, I'm more referencing, like, Baltimore Avenue, or like, the gas station areas, or over by the Chick-fil-A. Those are the places where people tend to leave those signs up way past the timeframe, and they expect someone else to clean them up.
Yeah.
Not on Baltimore Avenue, not, city Laurel.
Directly across the Chick-fil-A.
Yes, that is, but, I mean, our area, people still leave them up there. So, I didn't know if that's something we needed to include in here, or are we just going to kind of word-of-mouth that again?
We could, if we had complaints about that, we could ask code enforcement to go to the businesses and ask them to remove it. Again, it's still private property, even if it's on their, you know, even if it's on Route 1, but if it's on their private property, we can just ask them to remove it.
Okay, yeah, no, I was more for the candidates, for them to understand that they need to pick up their own stuff.
Oh, well, we can clarify that in the packet.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, yeah, I can put something in there.
Okay, thank you. Section 6-16, page 14, can you please confirm if, I saw a part where it's about keeping the peace and maintaining decorum, will the election judges, and I don't know if that would be in the separate packet that you create, or in this, I know this past election, they taped off certain areas where candidates would be, is that something that will happen again? Do we need to put that in here to clarify and confirm, or?
Yeah, no, in the chart, in the ordinance, it's, you know, limits the, the distance that the candidates can be, so that's what we measure, and then we mark it off. So, what we did last year, or last election, was to make out the spaces for each candidate so they would have, you know, enough space, and then we, so that we could, you know, cordon off the parking for residents to vote. So, that's something that would be in the SOPs for the Board of Elections.
Okay, thank you. Would this also be, would the sizes of candidates' vehicles in those sections, would that also be? Because I know there were some trucks that drove through, that they said it was too large, it shouldn't be- that they said it was too large, it shouldn't be in the area where the polling was. So, I don't know. And I only, you know, heard them coming out saying that.
I've never seen anything that talks about the limit unless there's a size limit in the parking area.
Yeah, that's what they were saying. So, I didn't know if that's something that we needed to include in here?
No, because that would be something that's, you know, addressed per site.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That's all that I have. Thank you so much. Are there any additional questions or comments from the Council or any objections on moving this forward to our 6:00 PM meeting today for the introduction and first public hearing? Okay. Well, hearing none. This item will be placed on today's agenda for the introduction and first public hearing for our in-person, regular mayor and city council meeting at 6:00 PM. With no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this work session is now adjourned.